Standing by the wall on the clock and the laptop in front of me, I am going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of our regular city council meeting for Monday, April 24th, 2023, 7:00 PM. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanyon, Pratt, Jenkins, and Osper?
Here.
Reins?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson? We did receive a note from Councilman Lanyon that he would not be able to be here this evening, so I'm looking for a motion that excuses his absence.
I would so much.
All right, thank you. Do I have support? Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are changes that need to be made.
I'd like to amend the agenda, make a motion to amend the agenda to add Action Item 11B, Ingham County Parks Grant Application.
Thank you. Dan, do I have support?
Sure.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to our audience participation with a maximum of five minutes. Oops, I'm sorry, Holly.
I need a motion to approve.
Oh, sorry. Yes, you're absolutely right. A motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Motion opposed? Motion carries. And now we have our audience, our participation with a maximum of five minutes for presentation if anybody would like to come forward at this time. Go ahead, Kent.
My name is Kent Hall, 509 Red Cedar Boulevard, also known as Wrinkle Street. In case you don't know, we're all 55 and older out there. Anyway, I just wanted to say a word about May 29th. That's a Monday. It's a national holiday, and we'll be kicking off our parade starting at 10 o'clock at the Commons, coming straight down to Memorial Park, where we'll have a little service there. So I just wanted to remind everybody, we don't have a newspaper in town anymore, so it's hard to, we'll put something in the journal, but it's hard to publicize this anymore. That's it.
Thank you. Thanks for being here this evening. Anyone else for audience participation? All right, moving along, I'm looking for approval of our council meeting minutes for April 10th, 2023.
Will you approve?
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Of course.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Terry, you had the opportunity for this evening's accounts payable, so I'll turn it over to you.
They showed me how to do it. They told me about how to do it, and so I actually got to test and find out that I actually knew how to do it.
Great.
I think I've figured it out, but only Holly can tell me the truth on that one. I had one question about something. It was this, it was an expenditure to the county for something regarding the stuff out there by the freeway.
Okay.
Apparently it was from several years ago, and it was just a thing that we had accrued back then. They did it back then, so we had to pay for it.
Okay.
That was one of the questions.
Yes.
Do I make a motion?
You do. You make a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Check 76663 is check 76701, and ACH 411A to 422A for the total of $83,934.97.
Don't forget your ETF on the very end of that sentence.
There's ACH as in ETF?
Yes, there's one ETF, 423.
423E. I see a 422A. Is there a 422?
At the very top. Look at your very top of your.
423E. So they're not listed actually in sequential order.
Yes, but if you, if you look at it, go down one more page for me. Yep, I'm sorry, to the header. If you look right there, Terry, I had a header, it tells you your checks.
And EFT 423. Oh, so the alpha part of that doesn't matter. Okay. So amend. Check 76663 is check 76701, and ACH 411 to 419, 421 and 422, and EFT 423.
In a total?
For the total of $83,934.97.
Thank you.
Proper today?
Perfect. All right, excellent. Thank you. All right, thank you, Dan. Any questions regarding accounts payable for this evening? All right. If there's no questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Jenkins?
Yes.
Osper?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving along, we have a couple presentations this evening. The first that I'd like to call forward will be our Capital Area District Library Annual Update. So if you could come forward, please.
You're actually getting a twofer tonight with us. I have Scott Dymstra, Capital Area District Library's Director, with me. I'm going to do the first brief portion, and then he's going to come up and give you guys some additional information I think you'll be very interested in.
Thank you.
And I have a worksheet flyer here if you want it. Some of the rest I'll have to be great.
And we do have some new council members at the table, so please introduce yourself.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yep, kind of got my spiel down. I've been here a few times.
Yes, you have.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Krasinski. I'm the head librarian over at Capital Area District Library Branch in Williamson. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to go over some happenings and highlights of last year. 2022 was a great rebuilding year at the library. We were happy to see our day-to-day activities begin to resemble some more normal times. I'm sure you all feel the same way. We had lots of people coming in our doors in greater and greater numbers, which we love to see. We resumed pretty much all of our usual in-person programs, both in the library and outreach events like at the Williamson Senior Center. Staff continued the tradition of the Battle of the Books program, which we do for the Williamson seventh graders, and that was a lot of fun for everyone involved, and well, the participation numbers were very good. And we also had several other special events, like a fun one was morel hunting with the five-time national morel hunting champion, which we had last year. Pretty cool guy, very unique individual. The art of herbal teas, and much more. During my report last year, I gave an update on the newly introduced Student Succession Initiative Program that we rolled out throughout Williamson schools, and I'm happy to report that the program has been very successful with over 30% of students using their accounts. We spent the school year continually educating the students, parents, and teachers about the program, and the vast amount of resources that they can access using their accounts within capital. Perhaps my favorite development at the library last year was the creation of the Art Williamson Group and its partnership with us in creating an incubator gallery for Williamson area artists. Their main goal, I don't know if you've heard about this from Scott, but their main goal is to showcase the incredible talent of local Williamson artists and artists from the area in the small rural area, and provide a venue in our area that is dedicated to showing art. We created it in the once unused hallway in the library, and it's available for viewing during all open library hours. There's actually a new showing opening up Saturday, so you are all invited to come out to the library Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, and you can view the art and speak to the artists and have refreshments, and just enjoy the new ambiance that the space creates. It really does elevate what we're doing. You know, we always have had a wonderful, comfortable space for students and for families. Well, this is something that's a little more sophisticated, you know, something that adults can come in and look at, and I know we have a strong relationship with our teacher, Ms. Kubo, too, and she brings classes to talk about the art and learn about the art. So it's been, it's been a great success. I can't wait to see it continue and keep going. Lastly, just a little peek ahead at what we're currently working on at the library. In addition to wrapping up all of our programs with the schools, we are celebrating our 25th anniversary of cattle all throughout the year, so there's going to be special activities and events, so watch for those. And we're busy preparing for busy summer reading season. The theme is all together now, so we'll be celebrating our communities and recognize the spirit of helping each other, and that is certainly alive and well here in Williamson. So that's all that I have, and I'm going to call Scott up, and then you can ask either of us any questions.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
Thanks for being here tonight, Scott.
Thank you. It feels like a while, so there's a lot of new faces, and I remember obviously you, Mayor Gilroy, but I have not been back here since 2019.
Yeah.
We were actually planning the move to where its current location is now in Mason Middle School as well, too. But I wanted to just talk to you a little bit about the value of the library and kind of the value that your residents are getting in libraries as well, too. We were aware of it last year because in 2022, our operational mileage was on the ballot, and in Williamson, the city of Williamson, it passed very well. But I wanted to share with you from that mileage revenue that we get from the operational mileage, kind of the value and the return on investment that your residents are getting as well, too. So circulation for the residents of Williamson is just under 50,000. So it's 47,550 items that residents in Williamson check out. That number is phenomenal, kind of the industry standard for libraries is they look at the population of an area and have a number that's called circulation per capita. So we know not every resident in Williamson uses the library, but it says if everyone in the city of Williamson used the library, it'd be 13 items checked out for each resident in that area, and that is probably the highest that we have in our service area. It's U, it's Williamson Township, and it's Meridian Township that have the highest number. One of the things that we also like to look at is what's the mileage revenue that we get from the city of Williamson, and then kind of what's the return that your residents get as well based on that circulation? And for that number, we look at, I don't want to inflate it with some higher cost items, so we look at our lowest cost item, our most popular item, which is books. And the average cost of a book is $17, so that's kind of the median average between a hardcover and a paperback book. But we have several other items that are much higher cost than those. We loan out Wi-Fi hotspots. We loan out American Girl Bells. We loan out telescopes. DVDs. You can actually check out a bike now at Williamson for a brief period of time. But we didn't want to inflate those numbers, so we just did the average cost of a book at $17. The return that your residents get based on that checkout is just over $800,000. And when you look at the revenue that we get from our mileage, which is just under $200,000 at $193,000, they're getting a very good return on that investment for the revenue that the library gets to actually operate the library. And that doesn't even account for the internet access in the library with public computers and Wi-Fi, doesn't account for the wonderful programs that Julie and her staff do with Storytimes, which help lead to successful students as they enter school as well, too. But I also wanted to share with you the other resources within Capital Area District Library that your residents use as well. Primarily, they do use the Williamson branch, but they also use our Books By Mail program, our Books By Mail. So that's if you cannot make it into one of our libraries, we will actually send materials to your house. It's mainly used by seniors or those with having any issues where it's a physical impairment that they could actually make it to one of our locations. They also use the Dansville Branch, Downtown Lansing Branch, Foster Branch, Haslett Branch, Holt Branch, Leslie Branch, Mason Branch, still going, Oakhamis Branch, South Lansing Branch, Stockbridge, and Webberville. Again, obviously, most of them do use the Williamson branch, but they understand the benefits of a district library as well, too. And then lastly, I just wanted to share with you where people come from to visit the Williamson branch as well, too. So Julie and her staff get visitors from Ellenden Township, Aurelius Township, Dansville, Delhi Township, Ingham Township, City of Lansing, Leroy Township, Locke Township, City of Mason, Meridian Township, Anandega Township, Stockbridge Township, Stockbridge, Village of Stockbridge, Viva Township, Village of Webberville, Wheatfield Township, White Oak Township, and obviously Williamson Township. So that shows you, they're not just coming to visit the library as well, too. There's a halo effect for that. So they're going to restaurants in your main street. They're visiting your parks in your community as well, too. So not only is the library a benefit to the community for your residents, your residents are getting the benefit of the other Capital Area District Library branches, and then your business community is getting the benefit of the library from those increased visits as well, too. So we wanted to talk about the values that the library brings, but I also wanted to share with you the value that we bring to your community and to your residents as well, too. And we couldn't do that without your partnership. What you did and helped us out by having the library in a beautiful space as you did in 2019, it is so very much appreciated, and we still value the partnership that we continue with all of you as well, too, to make the city of Williamson successful, but also to make our region successful as well, too. So I wanted to thank you on behalf of Capital Area District Library for being a very strong partner, and I do see one question.
Yeah, I do. I'm curious how you decide your emphasis for, say, for example, which books you're going to stock?
Sure.
For example, would you say emphasize classics over more recent written stuff or fiction over that?
We try, we try to have a balance, so we would look at maybe some classroom support, but it's, a lot of it is data-driven. So we have, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but we have a software called Collection HQ. Think of it almost as a supply chain management tool for libraries. So it's based on what your residents like to check out. It's based on the request that Julie gets at her branch, and then we, being part of a district library, we have 500,000 physical items. We also have over 500,000 digital items, and so your residents can pull from all of those items, whereas if it was just one library, you would say probably have 30,000 items, and you would only be limited to those 30,000 items. So we actually pull into Julie's collection based on what the residents of Williamson are checking out, or the other visitors in Williamson are checking out as well, too.
Thanks.
Yep.
Scott, can you send that list of communities that visit our library?
Definitely.
And the activities that you've been doing?
Yep.
Can you send that to John so that he can get it to us?
Definitely.
Because I'm sure that's something that we would love to share on our, you know, our social media.
Sure.
You know, like, like Mr. Kent, Mr. Kent Hall said, we don't have a paper in town anymore, so we have to kind of be creative with, with your information.
Yeah, exactly.
So I would love to see that information.
We definitely can, and, you know, talk about the impact that a library can bring into the community. I do have to thank Kent as well, too. So he's a great partner and on the, on the council when the library is moved as well, too, so.
Okay, well, thanks for being here, and don't be shy.
Oh, definitely not. Now, yeah, now I'm more comfortable. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
Next, we have our Farmer's Market Sowing Growth Annual Update, and I see Jane Reagan out there and Tom Carey and Sharon LaPointe, so come on down.
All right, I'm going to pass these around. Jane is going to, I think I got one for you.
Hopefully, we have one for all of you, and the absent.
And we can share.
Hopefully, my counting skills are.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am Jane Reagan. I am the president of the Board of Sowing Growth. That is the nonprofit organization that operates our Eastern Ingham Farmer's Market here in Williamson. We turned in, and there should be at each of your places, our annual report for 2022, a little three-fold brochure. It's in, like, eight font, so you might need to put on your bifocals, but we wanted to get everything in it. So that is for you to just see more details than we are going to be able to provide you tonight in our brief presentation. So I'm just going to give you a little, a little overview, a little history, and then our market manager, Tom Carey, will talk about how the market went last year, what our strategic planning goals and objectives are, and what the future's going to bring. So the history and the timeline, the farmer's market used to be operated by the city, and then in 2018, the city decided to make, to change that, and the advisory committee of the city's farmer's market ended up being the founding members of Sowing Growth. And that is a nonprofit. We chartered that spring of 2018. We created bylaws and a board, and we got that market operating on time, and, and yet it was a struggle. It was a really rough year. And so in 2018, that little description says making it through, becoming a nonprofit. We really were pretty much dog paddling most of the year, but every Sunday we were open, and we learned so much. We learned a lot that summer. 2019, we call it recovery and organizing. 2020, we had to respond and strengthen to the impact of COVID. Blessedly, farmer's markets were considered food sources, so we were allowed to be open, but there were restrictions with COVID, so we created one-way walking, pedestrian traffic. But the vendors were spread out a little further. We eliminated all children's activities, all live music, things like that that would encourage people to gather, and we kind of were just saying, follow these arrows, do your shopping, and then leave so that nobody's going to get sick. And all the vendors wore masks that summer, and so did the visitors, and so did the volunteers. So we really worked hard to keep that, the market safe. In '21, we were continuing dealing with COVID, but at the same time, we were building a stronger board and our, and the organization that operates the market. We got a lot, we just, our organization and our activities began to gel, I guess is a good way to say it. At the end of '21, we brought back music and the kids' activities, starting around August, and that, it worked. Everybody felt safe with the protocols that we had in place. And then this past year, we spent three months as a board developing a strategic plan for the next three years, from '22 through '25. And it's a, just like strategic plans, I bet you've all done that, it's detailed, and it really is, it covers three organizations. Sowing Growth is the umbrella, the mother organization of, that includes the Board of Directors. The board itself has a strategic plan, and the farmer's market has a strategic plan. So all three have their own goals, objectives, and specific activities and strategies. Next page. We have an agreement with the city. For those of you new council members, there, it's a wonderful partnership that we use the city parking lot. We have to fill out the paperwork to ask for permission, but we are on city property for the farmer's market. The agreement allows us to use the electricity there and the water. The bathrooms are opened every Sunday so that the market, the visitors and the vendors are able to use it. And the storage room behind the concession stand near the band shelf is where a lot of our materials are stored. Last year, we bought, we purchased with help of a grant as well as our fundraisers. We bought a trailer, so now we don't have to go to the storage room, unload it, take it to the parking lot, unload it, set up everything, load it back up, and take it back to the storage unit. We put it all in the trailer, which is sitting right there in the parking lot. It was a really, really great investment and a great purchase, but we still have a lot of items in that storage unit. So thank you for being such a cooperative partner in honoring your end of the agreement, and we're doing our best to honor ours. You all got a copy of that in, I think, your electronic materials for today, just to refresh your memories or to familiarize you with that. The other thing I want to quickly mention is funding sources. We have no given funding. Every penny that comes to us comes from donations or fundraisers or vendor fees. The vendor fees all are applied to the stipend that we pay our farmer's market manager. And then we, we have applied for and received some grants, and those have helped us purchase, for example, hand washing stations, which became pretty important when COVID was around. So we have two hand washing stations that are, they're, they're used by people. They're both the main entrances of the market. And then we're working really hard this year to find more sponsors. We've estimated that it costs about $100 to run each market, and so to be a sponsor for a Sunday, it only takes $100, and then the sponsor's name would be on the, on our signage, they would be publicized on our Facebook page, which has almost 4,000 friends. It would be in our newsletter, which goes to 700 people, and then every visitor that comes, we average over 500 visitors every week, would be able to see and thank that sponsor. So that, the other thing that we would like your help with, if you ever run across any grant source that you think would apply to us, please share. That would really be helpful, because we're always beating the bushes for more funding. All right, I'll stop there unless you have any questions of what I just presented.
Thanks.
All righty.
All right, I will try to quickly cover a few things about the market. Well, thank you. I am Tom Carey. I'm the market manager of the Eastern Ingham Farmer's Market. So nice to meet all of you. Some of you are new to me, and perhaps new to you, and thank you for the opportunity for us to share this with you. I just want to start on page five, just a couple highlights. Just looking at the total number, which is like the fourth group of buyers there, the total in the new vendors, the dark green bar represents our total number of vendors in 2022, and you can really see that it's, there's a lot of growth there. We've got a lot of returning vendors and a lot of diversity of vendors, and so that's just a really good sign, and it's nice to have that. So both, you know, it's really nice to know that the vendors want to come back, and it's also nice to know that we have new vendors that want to participate and be part of the market, so that's really good. Moving on to page six, I just wanted to share a little bit about, we, we try to capture some information about vendor sales. It's anonymous. People can share their names or not, but it gives us an idea, sort of a snapshot of every market of how the sales are going, and it also gives us a yearly snapshot of how overall sales are at the market. And they've been trending upward. We have, if you look at the top box on the right-hand side, that just shows the aggregate number year to year. And then if you look at the box on the lower left-hand side, the average sales per vendor, even though we had more vendors, we still are, our average sales per vendor is going up, and that's a good sign, because if our aggregate number was going up only because we just have more vendors, that doesn't necessarily mean each vendor's doing better, but seeing the per-vendor sales go up is a good sign. So I think a lot of the arrows are going in the right direction and that we're seeing the kind of growth and enhancement and, I think, satisfaction from the vendors and what's happening at the market. Looking on page seven, we're looking at our market visitors. We count the number of visitors who come to the market with a clicker every, every weekend, and you can see that our, our highest counts have been pretty consistent. That's the first group on the left-hand side. We didn't necessarily have our highest year last year, but we had our, the lowest count was the highest that we've ever had. So our worst day was better last year than any of the previous year. And then you can see our average number of customers per day is going up and our total number of customers. We were over 11,500 last year, which has been, it's really nice to see those numbers go up, starting at about 9,000 in 2019, so we've seen some good growth. Looking at volunteers, that's a really critical part of, of making the market succeed, and you can see, if you go all the way to the left or all the way to the right, you can see that our volunteer participation in 2022 was, was really great. You can see, so that second in 2020, our numbers really dropped. That was due to COVID, so we rebounded, and we really got good local participation. Page nine, it gives you an idea of where the different vendors are coming from, and very high percentage of them are from Williamson, with not surprising the more close and larger local communities around us also being the source of some of our vendors. Food assistance is one of the other things that we offer through the market. On page 10, just quickly, the second group of numbers is our EBT or the food stamps that we're able to provide, and that's been slowly going down. It peaked in, during COVID and has gone down a little bit. Funding to individual house Funding to individual households has gone down. So we're probably going to continue to see that decrease. Although our Double Up Food Box, which is specialized around helping people get fresh fruits and vegetables, has gone up. Our WIC has gone down, but our Senior Project Fresh has gone up. So we're kind of seeing, overall, it's been kind of flat. But just the characteristics of the different programs have changed. Overall, just sort of looking at where the market stands today, it's, I think we're in a really good, solid base. You have the information in front of you. I don't need to go through it. But we're just, I think, in pretty good shape. We've got great support from this community. And we're very thankful for the support from the city. Obviously, we couldn't do a lot of what we're able to do without the city's support. Having that space, having, you know, where it's located and the support that we get from you has been fundamental to our success. There's a lot of growth possible. And, you know, as we go forward and the market gets bigger, we may have to look at how do we grow? And physically, what are infrastructure needs? We've already started discussing some of those around electricity and getting more support for food trucks. And, you know, there's just, there's a lot here. I'm not going to go through it. But I think the, you know, the biggest thing is, is that right now, a fraction of the people who eat fresh fruits and vegetables and, you know, food to cook at home are coming to the market, less than maybe around 1% of the people who make purchases between May and October. And our goal, I think, is to really make that 2% or 3% or 4% and really try to figure out, how can we reach more people and get them coming to the market and getting that fresh local food? So with that, thank you. Thank you for your time. And do you have any questions?
Have you reached the point where you've had to turn any better away because there are too many of the same kind?
I think that that becomes, I haven't turned them away per se, although I do have conversations and I'm, it's like, look, we've got two or three of that vendor and I don't know, you know, I don't want three of you to show up and I'll go home disappointed. So sometimes I'll just fit them in, like when another vendor isn't coming or they may just decide it's not, it doesn't sound like a good fit to them. So I haven't really sort of tried to do that. Because maybe they've got something that's unique and people really like. And it's hard for me to be the judge of that.
How do you reach out in your food assistance program? How would individuals become aware of that?
Well, that is something that we need to do far better. Our main communication channels are Facebook, Instagram, the, you know, the paper that no longer exists, our newsletter, which has got, what, 800 people on it? But trying to get ourselves in front of new and targeted communities who really need to hear the information is something I think we would love to have help in strategizing and partnering with anybody to do that better. Because I don't think that we've done what we can do, for sure. And great ideas are appreciated, so, and even ones that are obvious. So we certainly have not tried everything.
Terry, do you have a question or comment?
2022 financial statement says that you raised almost half your income with pop can collections.
Oh, yes.
How in the world can you do that?
Well, that is, there's a wizard.
You have a genius that does this. Pop can collections are.
If you don't belong to the email distribution, you should because get the emails that they're doing pop can drives.
This person has a very fast wrist.
Remember pop return stores closed for a few months during COVID? And we, as a board, talked about, a couple of other board members had done bottle collection as a fundraiser at work. And so the decision was made, let's resurrect it. And I'm telling you, people brought truckfuls that they could not return for two or three months. And then they realized, you know, I hate doing the returns. And so every, we are open 23 Sundays in the, during the season. Every Sunday, we're collecting bottles and cans. During the winter, November through April, we're collecting two times a month. We're in that parking lot for just two hours. And people pull in, they don't even get out of their car. They push the trunk open and there's two bags of bottles there.
My vehicle is associated with the bottle collection.
You can't go anywhere with us.
I'm almost afraid to come to that parking lot other than when I'm supposed to be there. Because literally, I mean, I have people, I'll come early and they'll see that truck.
They know that truck.
And they're there. I've also had people expecting me to be there and leave stuff before I get there.
Oh, gosh.
So it's, once you start something like that. I mean, we had a clue at the end of our first season of bottle collecting when people said, you know, the market's over in mid-October. And people were like, well, are you still going to do this?
Okay about the food, but what about the cans?
And I thought, and I thought, we'd be crazy to stop it. Because we had, we had our people who were loyal and also just didn't want to deal with them. So we did continue to do them in the winter months. And it's paid off. It's a lot of work, but not the collection.
Sharon has done the lion's share of returning, so that's.
But I am pretty darned.
Kudos to you.
Well, we appreciate you being here this evening. And I know we have another presentation. So I'd like to go ahead and thank you so much. If you have questions offline, please look up Sharon and Jane and Tom. I'd like to move on with our Grainger presentation for services.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
John and Holly. Thank you for allowing me to come here tonight. I wasn't sure if you were projecting that or not. I shared an overview last week with John and Holly. And I understand that she, that they shared it with the council. So I'd like to just go through that a little bit. First, I'd like to start by saying we greatly appreciate the relationship between Grainger Waste Services and the City of Williamson. As we touch base on our services and how things are going, I understand where things are going quite well. I hope you feel that sentiment as well with that. If not, I'm open for comments afterwards. Just a little bit about Grainger. We've been exist since as a, the waste services since 1966. Apologize, I have a personal in and it keeps slipping. And it's so, I'm lisping, sorry. Over 350 associates now. We consider ourselves the, we're certainly the largest independent and leader in environmental services with what we do. Full range of all disposal services for trash recycling at the landfill. We are Michigan's most trusted and reliable independent waste hauler. We do live by the golden rule, which just simply means we want to treat others the way we want to be treated. Our associates absolutely pride themselves on their work. The mantra in the shop with operations is really no trash left behind. Or recycling, as it were. Over 56 years, I believe that's actually 57 now, 160,000 single subscription subscribers right now. That doesn't count the 54 different municipalities that we work with. And that needs to be updated too. I see it says 52. So we were one of the first people to do, I guess we were the first to do carts. We operate two landfills. We provide 50,000 services every day. That can be from trash recycling to commercial and it can be roll-off. The trash that's picked up from the City of Williamson is taken to the Wood Street landfill. The recycling material that's collected goes to the Antara site that is in the City of Lansing. We've been taking our single stream processing to them. The landfills at the Wood Street and on Grand River, Wood Road, excuse me, they are all at the highest standards. Being a municipality, I imagine you're familiar with working with Eagle. We volunteer a lot for things with Eagle as we go through the stages. We follow all their requirements to make sure we're doing those at the highest level. Let's see, our equipment and maintenance, our fleet is over 200 trucks now in the Lansing area. There's nothing older than a 2017. And those 2017s are actually spare trucks. So if we have a breakdown, we can take care of it right away. We believe in a lot of preventative maintenance. So the shop runs five days a week, two shifts per day, constantly working on trucks. Hydraulic spills happen. We had one about three years ago here. We do everything we can to prevent those. Our mechanics don't have to go through a checklist. They're able, if they see a weak hydraulic line and they can tell by feel, they just replace it so that we don't have a spill out in the field. If we do, we take the responsibility ourselves and do the cleanup for those. This community is connected with ASL trucks or automatic side-load trucks. They do provide quite a bit of efficiency. Trucks are really expensive. They're a little over $400,000 apiece these days. And the emission standards are quite high with what we work with. But that's our commitment to it. We use this for, it is certainly for safety. We want to keep every driver in the truck as much as we possibly can. Finding people to throw bags of trash or pick bags is really a thing of the past. And the injuries are so high with this job. It's the sixth most dangerous job in the country. There were three fatalities in the state of Michigan last year. Our goal is to keep them in the truck so they don't have to get out. We're looking to eliminate the shoulders and the knees and the ankles that you can imagine getting out, in and out. We're down to very few rear-load trucks left. I've seen more videos than I care to of near misses of Grainger drivers where people just don't seem to see 20 tons of steel with flashing lights and they slam right into the back of us. It's really quite scary when you see it. Technology, every truck is GPS. So there are six cameras on the truck, front, back, both sides, one in the cab watching the driver and then one that watches the hopper so that you can see the material that goes into it. We know where they are at all times. We know the speed limit that they're going. We can watch all of that. They have tablets in the trucks. When they hit a stop, they punch the stop so that we know that it's been completed and we take care of that. Communications-wise, we do offer Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, customer service. I have 47 people answering phones. And if you know anybody who's looking, we're hiring. So we still need some people. We, of course, have the website, 247365. We recently have introduced chat. It's kind of new to us. We have limited hours right now. It's just been kind of a trial for us with it. And of course, we accept emails, 247365. We, of course, have Facebook, all the social media channels and things like that that we utilize. Outreach in the community, we do love to sponsor events. I'm almost embarrassed to find out that we already were a sponsor, but that was through a family member. But the company can also sponsor events too. So we provide a truck for the Christmas parade. I'm open to doing Touch a Truck events, anywhere where you can get people exposed to it. I often feel trash as kind of a, well, it's garbage. You know, it's something that nobody wants. But it's a hard job. It's a physical job, even when you're staying in the truck. And it's not what it was, you know, our guys aren't, thankfully, they don't have to carry, you know, 200-pound cans around. You know, it's, I love to talk about 20 tons of steel with a robotic arm off the side. It's just a different job. Grainger really provides a good living, good healthcare benefits and a great 401K. We have a lot of drivers who are in the 30, 35 years. They literally, because of the 401K, are able to retire millionaires from what Grainger puts into it. Our current municipal services, we have a two-yard every other week here at City Hall. We provide an eight-yard at the wastewater treatment and we provide a 96-gallon recycling cart at City Hall. You can see the rates that are listed there with it. It's a total of $182.24 per month. What we'd like to ask for is a little increase on the two-yard every other week and on the one at the wastewater treatment. These rates are all below cost even. So that's part of our partnership. We would like to give the recycling container, that, I'm not sure how that came about with that rate. Normally, we provide something like that. So that would be a reduced cost down to $150 a month. So for your current residential services, there's some uniqueness to what we have in the City of Williamson. Number one, in the sense that we build a residence direct. That's how the relationship has been since at least 2013. I'm not sure if it goes back through. That's the oldest that I could find in it. So that's kind of interesting. The current rate you have for a 96-gallon cart to a 65-gallon, that's such a large discrepancy from what normally it would be for a discount like that. And then the trash or the recycling is very reasonable right now. I still have a very reasonable. The yard waste service that we offer, that is not a mandatory within the community, nor is recycling really. Your participation rate is about 65% for recycling right now in the area. Not horrible by any means. The put-out rate on it is not as high as the participation rate of the people utilizing it. So it being every other week, you know, I'm open to partnerships. I'm talking about how we can get more interest in recycling and how people could participate more. The majority of the residents are using a 96-gallon cart. There are under 200 people that still have a tub. That is something that if you're open and moving forward together, I would like to convert those from tubs to carts so that we can add to the efficiency of it and hopefully encourage them to do more. There are also bag tags in the community, which is another unique thing. I have it in a few of my communities. So that is really something that we often look at is the senior option, we provide these so that they can use bag tags. So currently, right now, there, you're getting a greatly discounted rate already. But then there's another discount that's going for seniors off of this. It's just, it's unique to see it reduced so many times and so many different ways for the services. So I'm going to keep moving. What we would like to ask for is for a trash rate of $14.73 per month for a 96-gallon cart, we'd like to offer a 10% discount or 15% looks like, 13.26 for 65-gallon carts. We would take the recycling up to $5.45 and yard waste would go from the 14 and change to 15.62. Bag tags would need to go up to $4 per bag off of it. To share some comparisons of where you're at with your rate, it's about a 60% discount from what standard rates are today. We pass along the highest discount we can for the exclusivity in your marketplace and to be able to work with 100% of your residents. That's why I feel like it's such a, it is a very good rate with it. We, when I spoke with, met with John and Holly, we talked about doing a community cleanup. And just as a gesture, we, I know there's something to your plan. We'd like to offer annually a 40-yard roll-off container that you could use for that cleanup. That's about an $800 value with that too. But we're open to participating in more ways and helping the community as we can.
Thank you. When would these new rates, the proposed residential service increases, this, when would it go into effect?
The current agreement that we have expires at the end of June. So we have some time that we're looking at with that. But I wanted an opportunity to come in front of you, see how you felt about what Grainger's doing, be upfront with what the direction we would like to go. Yes, sir.
So you mentioned with recycling that you still have some people that are on tubs and you'd like to see them go to carts.
Yes, sir.
But I see on your presentation here, you don't have the price for what the tubs are. What are, what's the?
The same rate. There, it's all the same rate, yeah. So even the residents with the tubs. So I, my, to my understanding, it would be back to when the recycling really started. Everybody was doing it in the 30-gallon tubs. So the conversion started over 96 to 96. I think a couple of years ago, we reached out to the residents and we asked them to switch over. We did get a lot of people convert over from tubs to carts. But it's now, it's at a point where I need to, I need to take everybody to a cart. But those, the residents with the tub are paying the same rate as somebody with a cart right now.
Thank you.
Who was next? Terry, did you have something or?
Just real quick, I understand this correctly, that the total monthly bill for the municipal, for the city is $182.24?
But that's going to reduce down to 150.
Your proposed rate is 150?
Yes, sir. We're going to provide the 96-gallon recycling cart at no additional charge.
So the cost is going to go down?
Yes.
For the city itself, yes.
Are you allowed to do that?
I think so.
I am. We normally would provide a recycling container to a city hall. That's, that's something that we standard do, so.
Yeah, two questions about recycling. The first is, if recyclable items are any up in the trash, I'm guessing they would have to stay there. There's no way to get them out?
There's not. There's not for me, unfortunately, or for the operator to remove that.
Yeah, I figured. Okay, and the other one was, since all the recycling is different types and some mixed together, how do you separate?
So there, the site and the entire site that's in the city of Lansing, that's about a $10 million facility. It's, it's quite the site of machinery. I will tell you, it's a dirty place. The material, so the truck backs up, tips it on the floor, it hits a belt that goes up, and then there are eight people who hand pick things out that is not recyclable. And they can slow it down or speed it up, you know, it depends on how busy the volume is. And then it goes through a number of, it goes through a magnet, it goes through rollers, so it sifts out glass, it takes the metal. They, the cardboard, because of its weight, winds up going in a direction. It's really pretty impressive. So then they bale all the individual materials and then they send them to different recycling centers. So a fair amount remains in the Midwest. I'm sure some goes to Canada. Mtera is a Canadian-based company. When it comes to recycling right now, there's not a lot of value. The market plummeted pretty hard last year. In January of '22, a ton of cardboard, it was about $150. By December, it was $30. Plastic, for fourth quarter, we actually had to pay per ton to have it processed. So now, at this point, I think it went up to, cardboard went up to $35 and plastics at $15 a ton. Recycling isn't a moneymaker. Recycling is because it's important to do. The landfill only has so much life in it, and now it has like 35 years left. But it's still, they wanna make that work. Granger's committed to recycling. I've only been with Granger since 19. When I started in 19, the same thing happened. It was at 150 and plummeted to 30. And I talked to the CEO, and I said, so what are we gonna do? He said, we're gonna ride it out. We've made the commitment, and it'll rebound, and it'll go down again. It's a commodity-based market, and we've remained committed to what we're doing with recycling.
Well, we really appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. Again, council, if you have any other questions for Granger offline, you can always reach out to John and have him give answers for you. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, may I ask, what would be the next steps that you would like to take?
Do you need a resolution? We have to vote on the increase, so we would, we would put that in probably our upcoming council meeting as an agenda item, action item, and then John will be able to share that information with you.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
I'd be ashamed if I didn't say thanks for letting me talk trash tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Good way to add.
Last thing for that.
I do, yes.
All right. Moving along to our action items, we do have our two action items. The first is the resolution of support to apply for the Ingham County Parks and Trails Milledge Grant Program for Memorial Park Planning and Engineering Project. John, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, and the council. The two action items we have tonight are related to the Ingham County Parks and Recreation Village.
Excuse me, we're running a business.
I apologize.
That's okay.
So the first one is for the Memorial Park project. We did receive a grant for that in the previous grant cycles for planning and engineering. What this grant is for is for the actual construction. And as we've talked along, the idea for that project is that it'll be 100% grant funded. So we're making that request and discussing grant strategies with Chair of the Parks Committee, Earl Wolf, and also our consultant, Mr. Ford at LAP, and also in their consultation with the county's grant consultant, they suggested that we submit for the full amount this time. Doesn't mean that we'll get it, but that's the resolution. We're asking you to do that tonight. Well, the other part, I might read the whole thing. The other part of it, we were able to secure the local operating engineers to provide up to $100,000 in in-kind services, and Ken was instrumental in that. And so that's pretty exciting, and that would serve as a portion of the match. There's not a grant match requirement, but anytime you submit, if you are using some matching funds, you tend to score. So that's where we are tonight. It's not obligating us to spend any dollars. It's just allowing us to submit the grant application.
Great, thanks so much. And Tim, you had an opportunity to look over this. I mean, anything jump out?
It's just the application. The applications we'll go through. There's a lot of applications coming in, and I represent Ingham County Parks, and so I will be reviewing the, they make the decision, and they just tell me what contracts to do, and I would likely send a waiver of conflict letter for each grant that's approved for City of Williamson.
Great, all right. Well, thanks, Tim. I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions for John at all regarding this?
I was kinda curious how you, the $500,000 figures arrived at.
So this first one is actually a million dollars, and we did have a present, yeah, we had a presentation at our Parks Committee meeting, oh geez, all the way back, I think, in January or February. The design plan was pretty thoroughly fleshed out by LAP, so that's how we arrived on that number. It's a big project. It's a great project, but it's a big one, and it's a large number, but it has a huge impact, and frankly, we think it'll score really well.
Great. If there's no other comments or questions or discussion, I'm looking for a motion to move this forward for the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of support to apply for the Ingham County Parks and Trails Milledge Grant Program for Memorial Park Planning and Engineering Project.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the role, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osper?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, that moves forward. Our next action item is the resolution authorizing the submission of the Ingham County Parks Grant Application. John, I'll go ahead and turn that back over to you again.
Members of council, Mayor Gilroy. So this is, I've been communicating with council through my management report for quite some time, really probably since I started, about the joint effort to make the Red Cedar River a blue water trail. And so the communities of Meridian Township, Williamstown Township, and the city of Williamson are partnering on the submission of this one. And this is also a consultation with County Parks and also the Drain Commission Office. The idea was that there would be up to $500,000 to be used towards a clean out of log jams along the Red Cedar River, and it'd really be from just a little bit east of Williamson all the way through Meridian Township. We put a lot of effort and resources into kayak landings, and so kind of the next logical phase is making sure that the down and upstream routes are clear. And so this will go a long way towards that. Williams Town Township was successful, I think it was a couple of years ago. My history, three years, yeah. My history isn't as sound as some of yours. And so it's very similar, the actual application's very similar. It's just, obviously, it's expanded because it's a larger area. So, and just the reason both these are coming tonight, we were a little bit late getting the language for this one, but the submission date is actually next week. So the grant will be in plenty of time. We just wanted to make sure that we have the resolutions for adoption. Can I have to answer any questions folks have?
Any questions?
This covers 20 years?
This would be for three years.
If there's no other questions, discussion, I'm looking for a motion to move this resolution forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing submission of Ingham County Parks Grant Application.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have support?
Sergeant.
Thank you, Steve. Holly, will you call the role, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osper?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along, we have discussion items. Road Diet, any update with that, John?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gilroy. So we will have at our May 8 meeting for council's review, the design. It is still draft until it's final, so it's a final draft, and it's all been through the MDOT round of review. So we'll have that for council to look at and react. Probably the most remarkable or the biggest change is along South Putnam. There are some parking changes there. That will be part of the plan, so we'll have that here. We'll probably put it on the, probably have physical copies, and then we'll put it up on the big board as well. And then time-wise, we've talked about, once that step's complete, we'll set about revealing that to the public. We'll have a specific public meeting, but at the DDA meeting in May, I'll also present that. And then we will go from there, take comments, and I think we'll get broad community acceptance for this, and with the idea that we're marching towards this summer with implementation.
Great, all right. Any questions regarding Road Diet? All right, moving along to our utility rates presentation. We did all receive this presentation prior to this evening, so I'll turn this over to John.
You want to turn?
Yes, unless Holly needs lights.
Yeah, you gotta turn the big switch on first. For, for energy efficient things, a lot of iron, but you just gotta go about that.
One more time. I know, I know, it's, it's a good machine, but it's really like.
Usually a fan starts.
You just have to source.
I don't hear his hands, just turning the wheel right there.
So this is our water and wastewater rate review discussion. We've been marching towards, you know, the budget approval for the coming fiscal year, and along with that, as the rate increases. So this is another, one of the steps in the process. So if you want to move to the next slide, Holly? So through that process, we did hire Baker Tilly to review our existing data and talk about our future requirements for both utilities. We put together the documentation for that, and that was shared with council in November of 2022. Tonight, we're presenting that from a high level, if you will. And then as we move forward in the process, we talk about the agreed upon recommendations of the draft budget, which we can talk about at day eight. And then we would hold our rate and budget public hearings on May 22, and then we include any necessary changes in the final budget. And the idea is that the final budget for the next fiscal year would be approved at first meeting in June, and if there's any rate changes, those will be effective July 1 of 2023. So in the Baker Tilly study, again, that presentation was held a number of months ago. Water and wastewater are really moving towards, I guess, the same fate, if you will. It was pretty easy to write this because there's really not a lot of cutting and pacing to go from one to the other. Really, the big challenge is that both our funds are, I was gonna use a horrible pun about treading water, but I won't do that. They're maintaining, we're covering our costs, and we kind of have this, you know, accordion of, if we do a lot of projects, we kind of dip into a little bit of our required RRI money to pay for it, but then if we don't do a project in the next year, it recovers a little bit. Most utilities sort of kind of go through that accordion phase of, you know, you're kind of humming along, you're doing well, and then you're hit with a pretty dramatic large plant improvement or something like that, or system failure. And so obviously, we're hoping to avoid that. So just the wastewater fund, I think the most significant thing is there's not been a rate increase since 2016 or '17. We do have minimal cash balances, and as I said, we're sort of holding the line, but we're not really making any progress. And we did have a work session on wastewater a couple of months ago, when we talked about the need for some pretty significant capital improvements. Water fund, same thing. We haven't had a rate increase in four years. Cash balances are minimal. If there's, I guess, a good news on the water side is that the water plant is relatively new, because the community made that investment and, you know, had the rate model for that back in the, you know, early 2010s. So, but both funds are marching towards the need for a rate increase. We'll go to the next slide, please. So the wastewater fund, we'll talk about the rate history, and then we have the fiscal year budget bottle, and then we'll kind of wrap up with the Baker Tilly recommendation. Next slide. So, and I don't expect anybody to, you know, read what's on the screen there, but just for the trend, so you can see, this is the same rate level since 2016, '17. This is, here it is in graphical form. I didn't want to get too heavy in graphical details because the information is pretty static, but it does show that we have not raised rates in seven budget cycles here, basically. So what's happened, and again, I realize this is impossible to read on the screen, but what's happened over time, and this is yellow, this is the current fiscal year, if we don't have a rate increase, we're gonna, we're gonna show an operating deficit for the year. It's not a horrible thing, because we can dip into cash reserves to pay for some of our capital projects that we need to do, but we're still, we're hovering right around $1 million in revenue and right around $1 million in expenditures every year. One of the more significant things, cost increases for this fund, regardless of capital, is the cost of chemicals. I met with Mr. Hanson the other day to talk just in general about all things budget, and the, and these are the details, a lot of these we'll cover in the May 8 budget work sessions. But the cost for chemicals, if we normally spend like $6,000 or $7,000, those are gonna skyrocket to like $21,000 to $30,000. So what's happening, without a rate increase, we'll kind of continue this fate. We won't have a lot of operating capital to do large projects. Next slide. So again, this is Baker Tilly's recommendation for wastewater. The net of it is, over five year, this five-year period, in order to, you know, do a really large wastewater project, a $6 million project, we would need a 50% increase from current year. That's a lot of ground to cover in five years. So we'll talk about that a little bit in the recommendation section. Really, the idea is a model of increasing the ready-to-serve charge pretty significantly in a couple of years, and then in the first year, increasing the commodity charge by about 20-some percent. Well, I'm not recommending that. That's not sustainable for our rate payers. And again, it's the situation we're in. We haven't raised rates. I mean, you know, blame is the easiest thing in the world to assign, but, you know, now it's our responsibility to move from the blame stage, to move toward these out years in the next five, six, seven years, to raise enough funds to be able to do the improvements at our wastewater plant. But we definitely, this is not, this is a can't. We can't do that. And so I wanted to underscore that for all of you tonight. Next slide. Water fund, next slide. Same, kind of the same, same detail. Here you have again in graphical form, in about four years since we've had a budget increase. You can see in the earlier years, we had a pretty, you know, steady climb up, a big jump for whatever reason, and that's what we're trying to avoid, is that, you know, 30% jump in any one given year, and then we've been static over the last four years. Next slide. Same fate. Water is again in a little bit better shape, but again, if we don't have some modest rate increase, we're gonna be on this accordion of, you know, we have some money to do projects, then we have none. Some money to do projects, and then none. Next slide. So similar to wastewater, Baker Tilly had a pretty significant increase recommended for the ready-to-serve charge, and then also a pretty, my editorial, pretty hefty rate increase for the commodity charge. Their recommendation for water is a 20% increase in the next five years. And again, that's not sustainable in the context of everything that we're trying to accomplish. So, next slide. So what we're gonna model, and we'll reflect this in the May 8 budget discussions, and you'll get, you'll get three scenarios for, you'll get a 0% increase, you'll get this recommended increase, and you'll get the Baker Tilly increase for comparison. But these are my recommendations. Wastewater is a $2.52 a month, ready-to-serve charge, and then a 5% increase rather than a, you know, 20-some percent increase for wastewater. And then water, excuse me, dollar a month, ready-to-serve charge, and then a commodity charge increase of 3%. Next slide. So as I said, these are our rate discussions, and we'll have plenty of time for questions. But the budget work session, we'll cover in more detail the models and the what-if scenarios. And then we'll have our public hearing on our budget and rates, and the budget will be adopted in June. That says the 4th, it should say the, the first meeting in June. 12? It's the 12.
It is, it's the 12.
The 12, yeah. Should say the 12, and then we have our new fiscal year, and then And then any utility, new utility rates would be effective for, for, uh, in the August bills. So that's an overview of where we're at. I know it's not, you know, a, a pleasant scenario or, or, you know, good news, but, um, we're just in a situation because we haven't, we haven't done any significant rate increases of any kind. We haven't done any, but we haven't done any significant rate increases in wastewater particular in a number of years.
I think what I would suggest to council is that, um, review this again. It was sent to us an email, bring your questions to the budget workshop session. And then, uh, or, you know, offline as well, reach out to John if something doesn't quite make sense. You have, uh, time to ask him before the May 8th, uh, work session. But, you know, just, uh, very quickly, I think that, um, you know, we've done the best we could for our community by not increasing rates over a significant period of time. Um, we're very fortunate to have the funding for the, uh, projects that we will be doing over the next three to four years. But, um, we need to get back to, uh, doing some rate increases and making sure that we educate our community as to why we're doing them, the benefit of it, um, for future, uh, growth, um, for our, our community. And, and, um, you know, as council members, when we talk to our constituents, just, you know, be able to educate them as to why we didn't do increases for a period of time and why now we have to circle back around and, and, um, you know, probably make that happen again. Dan.
So, um, part, part of the reason we did not do rate increase, well, part of it was we didn't want to do any rate increases during COVID.
Right.
And part of it was, um, we had a significant portion of town, not all of town by any means, but a significant portion of town that by the time, when the water left the plant, it was great water. But by the time it got to their home, it, it wasn't, it wasn't the greatest water. We can point to a lot of these projects that we now have funding for, that we're now doing, saying that this is directly going to improve the water that's making it to your house. While we, there, there's no way, in my opinion, we can go with what, um, Baker Tilly recommended. But we, we have to, we have to start making improvements in our funds to be able to enforce things like the wastewater improvements we would like to do and we need to do and things like that.
Right. Very good point, yes.
I think I put out about the wastewater projects, the, again, at the, both at Baker Tilly's presentations, you remember they presented a seri- scenario of no projects, a $6 million project and a $12 million project. I mean, who, after, you know, having been here for a little bit now, and been able to review it, you know, quite a bit, we need to do plant improvements at, at the wastewater plant just to maintain the current operation. I mean, there's, we're, we're, we're actually in a far better shape than I anticipated we would be as far as like overall capacity. We continue inflow and infiltration, which is water that gets in the system that's now wastewater, like floodwater and things like that. We, we continue to kind of chase that a little bit. And then we make improvements like mechanic street, Zimmer, or those will be elevated and new and, and not taking into consideration rainwater. So we have plant capacity available. And we have, in my, my professional opinion, we have enough plant capacity to continue to maintain what we have and, and, and have some modest growth over, over, you know, three to four to five, you know, maybe even a 10 year period of any kind of economy. But there's some things that like, I think we, it was mentioned in the wastewater work session about the, the UV system. The UV system is so old, it's become increasingly more difficult to get, so you would evolve smart. So we need to improve that. And that's just for daily operations, that's not, that's not for any kind of expansion or anything like that. One of the challenges that we have too is because we do have, we do have good engineers, we do have good operators. We would score higher for state grants if we were screwing up more, but we don't want to do that. And screwing up more means polluting the river. So that's kind of the conundrum that we have. So, but I, I'm, I'm confident with, you know, if we get, get back on track and, and House one Brian's absolutely right. But many communities, including the community I used to work at, we, we didn't do rate increases during COVID either. A lot of folks, because we didn't know, people didn't know what the economy was gonna be. Folks were losing jobs, people were losing businesses. So absolutely from a policy perspective, that was the right thing to do. And that's an easy one to define. But, um, for us moving forward to, to make sure that we're, you know, maintaining what we have with, you know, independent of any kind of growth. Because the other thing that can happen too, and this, this is, this happened in the, in the community that was in previously, you know, we started our, our, pretty draconian, unfortunately for that community, uh, rate increases because our, our wastewater rates were, you know, $2 ready to serve charge. So we were looking at a 78% increase over four years. But what happened is the, the economy turned around and so there were more customers came on. So we were able to really, really lower that, that amount. I, I'm confident that Williamson will, will see some of that. We'll see, we'll continue to see, um, growth in some of the, the neighborhoods that are here. There are some, you know, development plans here and there that will add to the rate model. That will bring that, over that five year period, that net 50% down to something more viable. Because I, you know, I could be cognizant at this point, recommend that. And then there are frankly, there are things as you move forward, um, from a budget perspective, that we can always trade out some priorities on the general fund if it, if it got to the point of, I don't want to say crisis, but it was like, look, the UV just can't make it another year and we have to replace it. And that's a million dollar project, so how do we do that? Similar to what, what we did, but, you know, it's on a smaller scale, but with the parking lot behind the pub. And we were able to advance construct that using general fund. So, um, so again, it's not great news, um, but we'll continue to, uh, you know, work the model and try and create the, you know, the, the rate increases as much as we can and make sure that are adequately communicated to the public of what we're doing, why we're doing what we're doing.
Thanks so much, John, I appreciate it. Uh, yes, Dan.
Rate increases, not having them is a good thing, in my opinion. It only should be generated or increased for the need. What I hope I see, or we see in the May 8th meeting is, I tried to reconcile the Baker Tilly, where they're saying that we had a 11, 11 month balance or 11 month, um, cushion. And that they only recommended six month cushion, minimum cushion. So I, I would want to make sure that I understand how their study comports with what the rate increases are. And if we could go by and not get a rate increase and move that 11 months down to seven months, we're still above what they're saying the minimum standard is. So if you can help me understand how the, the two will mesh with one another.
Yep, I can answer that right now, there's two things. So the overall fund, i- i- one thing you have to separate on the bottom line, and this is how it has to be reflected in government accounting, there's the fund balance. The fund balance includes all your assets, so it includes the value of the plant. So when you see 8 million, 8.5 million dollar fund balance, that, that's.
That's not really cash.
Eight million of that, well, 7 million, 700,000 of that is the plant and the assets. And so there's a modest amount of cash available. And, and you're right, we can lower that, but when we're looking at, and, and that's kind of the loop that we're in. We're always kind of staying at that level. We have to get to the point in our rate model for the wastewater plant that we have to have additional resources, which means dollars available, that if we have to borrow money, bond out to do a big project, that's what we're trying to get to. And the other thing too is the, uh, the auditors presented, um, at the December meeting, we, we have our overall, we have our general fund, and the general fund is in, in, you know, excellent financial shape. And that, that's why I said earlier, possibly as we move through time, we could draw on some of that in order to, to lessen rate increases over time. But the reality is without a rate increase, we'll continue, because cost has played. The other thing too is we're very low percent of personnel in our rate models. Majority of it is debt service. Um, we have, we have debts on water, wastewater that, you know, need to be paid off for a long time. We have some, we have some, some of our debt service, um, I hope I'm around the scene 2050, but I'm, I'm not optimistic. Trying to eat better. But, uh, so, so you're, you're right in that, in that moment, yeah, we can, we can use cash. And frankly, we're doing that. And with the wastewater slide that was up there, so, you know, we kind of break even, we're right around a million bucks. And in the, in the current fiscal year, it says that we're gonna spend like 1.3, 1.4 million. We're using some of that cash balance to pay for the mechanic street and Zimmer lift station. So we're kind of already doing that. That's, that's a good point, it's a good point to make. But again, the, the overall rate model moving on is there, there ha- yeah. Nobody likes to do an increase, it's one of the, the, the least capable things that, that, you know, you, you have to do in the, in this line of work, but, um, sometimes it's a necessity.
Yep, Scott.
Yeah, so the use of general fund, I thought that the water thing was sort of its own little thing. I didn't realize you could use general fund dollars to take that out, that's what you go to do?
Through the chair, yeah, you can do that.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it's not a best practice because it's not a true positive.
Yeah, my reflection from the past was there was, they were saying no, no, no for that, and this was interesting.
Yeah, wait, go ahead, Dan.
I think two years ago during, during COVID, as a, as a way to not have to do a rate increase.
We gambled.
During COVID.
We gambled.
We moved some money from the general fund to, to be able to, to do what we needed to do in 2020.
And we, we also, um, just historically too, for, for new members, we gambled by submitting that application for the 3.8 million or whatever that we received from Representative Slotkin because she put our community forward. And we were very blessed to be, uh, one of those communities chosen for federal funding. Had we not gotten this federal funding, we wouldn't be able to do the projects that we're doing. And you would probably s- see higher rate increases coming to us soon. But, um, you know, this is something just to digest, um, like I said, come back with questions, uh, for May 8th. Definitely reach out to John in between that time if you have questions. I'd like to keep moving forward on the agenda if we could.
One, one comment again? Um, on the whole, I'd like to see, and, and not just me, but other people, I'd like to see the increases happen more in the commodity side and less on the ready to serve side. In the Baker Tilly, um, summary, they mentioned that it's generally perceived that it's more fair to charge people more when they use more water, as opposed to charge people more just because they're connected to the system. So I'd like to see, uh, looking at your final recommendation there, it was kind of heavy on the, um, ready to serve and not so much on the commodity side. So my recommendation or request would be pushing more toward the commodity side.
Thank you, noted, right. All right, uh, moving along on our agenda for this evening, correspondence received information only. We do not have any, so I'll move right to department head reports. We have, uh, John's memo, city manager memo, so I'll go ahead and turn that over to him.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, because for us, uh, we're super late, um, I'm gonna not go over this chapter verse. One thing I do want to point out though, I, I wish I had, uh, better news about this, but the North Putnam project, the bids came in, uh, because there was state funding involved, uh, we had to use the state in the bid process. And the engineer's estimate was right around 2.5 million and the bid came in about 3.5 million. So no need, no need to sound the alarm, um, you know, we, we're gonna do the project. Um, we're, we're, we had a great meeting with Spicer, um, last week, what the, the city engineer, on, on how to un- unbundle some of the, uh, project in order to, uh, do that apart from the state bid process. Um, it's kind of the downside sometimes of using state or, or federal money is that we're really bound by their rules. And in this case, we, we receive what's called a small urban allocation, it's like 375,000 dollars. And that's money that we get from major streets about every three years. Well, that's about, you know, we anticipated it being about 30% of the project, but on a 3.5 million dollar project, it's about 10%. So one of the things that we're looking at is sort of decoupling the road part and doing the utilities as a separate bid pack. But we're gonna do the project. We may end up doing it over two construction seasons, which means starting this year and then coming back next spring to finish it off. If we did that, the road would be maintained during the winter, so people would be able to drive it. It'd be a little bumpy, but it'd be fine. But, I mean, there's no way, much like we can't do a 50% rate increase over five years, we can't spend 3.6 million on, on the single street project. And it is complicated as a project, there's water, there's wastewater, there's stormwater, there's sidewalks. So, um, it's not great news, um, just changes the schedule a little bit, but we're gonna forge ahead, we're gonna get the project done. So, and Mr. Bradley's here, he was at the meeting, he's always a big help for us. And so he's just here for support, if you have any questions, it's Spicer. The only thing he could probably be edited of is that they're, one of his colleagues, um, kind of saw the same situation in a couple of different regions of MDOT. And do you want to talk just real briefly about, they kind of changed the bid rules?
Kind of brief, I guess first and foremost, there was only one bidder on this project. MDOT in a given month may do anywhere between 50 and 80 projects, let's say. That particular month, there was, I would, I would venture to say probably over roughly close to half of the, the bids that came in were high. But they did change the way that they present the information to the contractor. Generally, every month they provide the bid, the engineer's estimate of cost, um, amongst the contractor, subcontractor, list pool, not list pool by name, but who can go for it. And they didn't do that, they took all that away. So contractors didn't know what other contractors were bidding either. And they didn't have any idea what the base cost from the engineer's estimate was. It just, they did this for, as a pilot for about two months. And I believe that Williamson just happened to be one of those communities inside of that, that window of time when they presented that. I believe they're not doing that anymore.
Well, all right, well, if, if you, if you have questions regarding the North Putnam, uh, project, please see John directly on that. And if you have questions regarding his memo, um, please see him regarding his report as well. We have city clerk, Holly Thompson has a report. Holly, how are you?
Good.
Good, excellent.
Um, I don't have anything to add unless somebody has questions.
Say, do you have any questions?
I do have one question. What, you mentioned in your report that you were gonna try for a grant, I think it was to do, take care of new, one of the trees are falling down there, trees. Were we gonna try to replace them with more concrete trees?
Yes, yep, that is the idea, because we already have the concrete pads and the, um, the things in them. So, yeah, it makes sense for us. And DPW has been saving tree trunks to help do that sculpture contest again. So, uh, I did get the grant submitted last week, and so we just wait and see if we get anything. It's a small grant, but it could help the response or something.
Thanks, Holly. Yes, Dan.
Holly, I've staffed the townships cleanup for about 12 years, so if you have any questions or whatnot, I'd be happy to.
Volunteer?
Excellent. Share knowledge, share knowledge. Eric, Terry?
Yeah, um, I'm concerned about this election thing, it, it keeps coming up. This is kind of a consistent thing. And the consistent report is that there's more questions than there are answers. There, what, what's your sense of this thing? It's, is there anything we should be doing?
You know, I, I feel like I'm, for the next meeting, the recommendations that I'm making will keep putting us forward, um, to just get us on track, to keep us going. Um, I think the city of Williamson is gonna have to stay alone. I, I know, uh, the county did a survey from, um, all of the municipalities, uh, seeing if they would partner with the county, and their responding answer was no. So that was a big eye opener, and they're, so they're not even offering it. But I, I believe if we, we get on that purchase program to get that new machine and get the, some wages increased, we can get it out to our, our election sector and try to get some new ones to help work those hours. Um, and then we can just keep going forward with more of a plan to get Williamson city voters to write to vote for those early nominees.
Okay, that sounds less discouraging than the report that's sent here.
Yeah, I, we're just, I'm just kind of moving forward on my own.
Well, thank you, Holly, for everything that you do, um, for our election cycles. And also we, uh, noticed here in the packet that Holly did receive a certificate for successfully teaching challenges and solutions for Michigan clerks. You are such a great leader in the, you know, Michigan clerks, um, arena. You know, she's been clerk of the year, uh, she really gives her time and talents to their group. So thank you so much for doing all of that, um, to help the other Michigan clerks be as good as you. And probably not, but, you know, maybe, maybe close. Chief, we have you here this evening, how are you?
I'm here.
Good, excellent, well, thanks for being here.
And, and so, um, on the crime side of the house, I don't have anything to report. I just wanted to remind everybody of crime guard. I do want to just give an update on staffing, uh, no improvements. Um, Joe Rutherford, who's been a great officer for us for four and a half years, left last week to go to another municipality. And, and so we, um, still kind of struggle in that area. And so I don't have any great news to move on to yet. The only news is we're not alone in this, a lot of other communities are in the same boat. And, and city manager and I had some discussions on where to handle this. The environment. And, and city manager and I had some discussions on where to have this, the environment we're in right now. We are currently still providing 24/7 coverage.
I know. We're very thankful for that. But council members, anything you can do as far as like sharing that, you know, we're looking for part-time, full-time officers, M. Cole certified, if you know somebody, even retirees out there, if you're retired, but you'd like to get back into it, please see our chief of police. We would certainly appreciate it. And thank you for everything you're doing to, to try to fill those open spots. I appreciate it, Bob. Moving along on our agenda, we have our committee, subcommittee reports. Does anybody go on to a meeting that they'd like to share information this evening? Yes, Tom.
Need to meet in last week. Quite a few things came up. Probably the most prevalent would be they nominated a few new officers, which was cool. They had some that had resigned or retired over the last few years, so they filled those spots. Those who deserve it, both. And they are in need of a new washing machine, which I know sounds pretty insignificant, but it's for washing turnout gear for your department. Here, really, really expensive, kind of an unexpected expense. So they actually think they can use the COVID ARPA funds to cover that. And they had to get rid of the rest of that soon. So kind of fell into place and that was kind of a win.
Excellent.
That was fun.
Great. Thanks. Terry, you have your hand up.
Parks and Recs, yeah. We did a walkthrough of the various parks. There's lots of projects coming around. That's the summary right there.
All right. Great. Anyone else? Dan?
We had a zoning board of appeals meeting last week, which was on the Ice House project. They needed a small dimensional variance, which actually abutted the city property next door that the water tower was on. So it wasn't, wasn't a big stretch to grant that it was basically related to the driveways. So we moved that forward.
Great. Excellent. All right. Moving along, we've got audience participation again with a five minute per presentation. Anyone want to come forward? All right. Council member comments? I'll start with Dan.
No comments.
Scott.
So in Brazil.
Yes.
I know it's like an object.
All right.
In Brazil, I saw this documentary. I was talking to him about what happens to recycled items in the trash. In Brazil, it's, I must tell this, people who are unemployed go to the dump and they collect recyclable items and they dance and sing while they're doing it. And I saw that and I thought, I will never complain about anything in my life ever again.
You know what? I know I can count on you for interesting things out of your bag at this table. Well, thank you for that, Scott. I appreciate that. Steve.
Appreciate the excused absences while I was enjoying warmer weather and then some worldly travelers. Glad to be back. Wish the weather would cooperate.
Sure. I need to bring that back with you. All right. Well, thanks and we're glad that you're back. Terry.
I'm still working on a new public service announcement, so.
Okay. All right. Well, remember, please be careful about what you put down the, the city drains there to cure that for you. Tom?
I don't have a lot. I just, I guess meetings like this can be kind of a little bit stressful because we're talking about a lot of monies needed and increases and bids that came in high and this kind of thing. But I appreciate the city staff and all their hard work to find many options and feasible plans for the future. I feel like we're in good shape, so I'm excited for the May eighth discussions and we'll, we'll figure out the best solutions we can.
Absolutely. I'll just add to what Tom said. Our city staff works extremely hard to make sure that we are good stewards of the tax dollars that we receive, of the funding that we receive. We, we go through everything we can to look for funding sources so that we don't have to put that burden on our taxpayers, you know, our constituents that vote us here. So I am looking forward to our budget sessions. I think we do very well in our budget sessions. We're, we are very responsible with the dollars that come in. We want to make sure that we do the best for the community with improvements, continuing to be progressive and move forward. So certainly would invite community to these sessions. We'd love to have input before the fact instead of after the fact. Because once we put through those votes, then it affects all of us. But I think we will do a good job as we have done in the past and I look forward to our work sessions as they come up. And of course, you know, if there's ever any questions, you can contact our, our city staff. But thank you very much to all of you at the table because without you, we couldn't be here and do what we need to do to, to keep moving the city forward. And I think that's going to be it for me for this evening. So I will go ahead and adjourn at 8:40.